All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for the LRB members for being here. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our joint public hearing. Um, starting with the adoption of the agenda, any changes to tonight's agenda? Any questions from council or motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
On my favor? I like it. Any opposed? Majority of groups' motion here is to go with the agenda as avenues. Um, jumping into our joint public hearing item, ZMA seven dash twenty-four Hopkins Farms.
Thank you, Mayor Day. Good evening, council. Good evening, LRB members. Thank you for joining us. Uh, this item on tonight's agenda is ZMA seven dash twenty-four, which is the Hopkins Farm Plan Unit Development. Similar to other joint public hearings, I'll be going over just background information, getting you guys familiar with the site. Uh, then going over project timeline and steps taken to get to this point. Uh, we'll go over the, the master plan and site characteristics and then wrap up with some comprehensive plan, uh, consistency. Uh, so to jump right in, uh, subject property is located at eighty-five oh one Pool Road. It's about as our furthest southeastern extent of our ETJ, uh, just north of Pool Road and, uh, east of Bethlehem Road. Uh, subject property is about, uh, fifty acres in size. Uh, it's currently occupied with residential land uses and some agriculture. Looking at the zoning of the area, it's largely, uh, low-density residential, um, on the, uh, east, west, and north. Uh, that's all within Town and Knightdale jurisdiction. Uh, on the south side of Pool Road is, uh, Wake County's jurisdiction, uh, zoned R thirty. Uh, but again, generally, it's, uh, low, low-density residential, uh, in, in this area. Uh, so looking at the project profile, the name of the project again is Hopkins Farm. Uh, applicants, they have, uh, Bergmark, Bergmark with McAdams. Uh, what's being proposed is a, uh, general residential medium density, such GR eight plan unit development. Uh, developer and builders, potentially Lennar. Uh, and what we're looking at tonight is a proposal, residential proposal of about a hundred and seventy-one residential units made up of single-family and townhomes. And this density is, uh, under three and a half units an acre. So to get you excited about the, the master plan itself, I'm just gonna throw this on a screen, uh, just as you can think about this as we go through our typical process. Um, but don't, don't fear, we'll, uh, go into more detail about this as we, uh, progress. Um, so been working with the applicant for about a year now, so back in, uh, July of twenty twenty-four, uh, we started this discussion and been working through our process. Uh, so tonight, it's a town council and LRB's joint public hearing. Um, and we, uh, staff met all the public notice requirements to hold this hearing tonight. So back in July of twenty twenty-four, we, we met with the applicant, uh, to discuss, you know, their goals of their project and then to discuss the town's goals. Uh, we went over the consistency, uh, related to the UDO, comprehensive plan, comprehensive transportation plan, among other, uh, adopted, uh, plans. Shared comments and feedback, uh, to, uh, try to get this proposal a little bit more in line with, with those, uh, adopted documents. Um, so moving forward, uh, another concept plan was submitted with a little bit of change in, in units. Uh, the, the roadway system largely stayed the same. Uh, submitted another sketch plan. Uh, you see that, uh, it starts to get a little bit more developed with, with townhomes down on the south side of the site and some detached, uh, housing to the north. And then, um, this biggest change in, in April, you start seeing the formation of, uh, the north-south Collector Road. Um, that we'll discuss a little bit further. And then here is the current iteration that's included in, uh, the agenda packet. Um, before, before all that, before the master plan was submitted, the, uh, the applicant was required to hold a neighborhood meeting. That was held virtually on March twenty-seventh. About fifteen folks attended that meeting. Uh, as you can see on the map, most of the folks were, uh, notified in the, uh, the estates at Smith Crossing to the west there. Uh, a lot of the discussion was around existing vegetation and buffering, uh, no, noise impacts, potential, uh, view sheds from those existing homes. Uh, potential roadway improvements to Graythorne Place, which is, uh, one of the roads within the states at Smith Crossing. Discussions about public utilities, impacts, um, to adjacent properties, um, and then construction traffic, and then also construction timeline. Following that, the master plan was submitted and went before the Development Review Committee for review, um, and comment on consistency or compliance with the UDO. Uh, no action was taken by the Development Review Committee as this is a, uh, rezoning, which requires town council's final decision. Uh, so through that meeting, we talked about the general roadway design, uh, on and off-street parking locations, stormwater, uh, green stormwater infrastructure also. Uh, the status of the existing farm pond on the site, recreational open spaces, and then, uh, a tree survey that was submitted a little bit earlier in the process than typical. So here is, again, a colored version of the master plan. Uh, the site is about fifty-one acres in size, uh, which proposes a hundred and seventy-one residential units with a hundred and two single-family detached homes and sixty-nine townhomes. What you see here is a result of several, uh, site development allowances being requested. Um, of course, town council has to, uh, approve those, uh, site development allowances, but just, uh, keep, keep that in mind here. Uh, we'll go over those in, in greater detail in a moment. So look at the, the actual, uh, proposed housing units. Uh, what's being proposed is, uh, about thirty-two front-loaded detached, uh, single-family homes with sixty-foot, which are sixty-foot wide. And then there are about seventy rear-loaded single-family detached units with minimum lot size of thirty-four feet. And then about sixty-nine rear-loaded townhomes with minimum lot size of, uh, twenty feet wide. So of these townhomes, about fifty-three will be facing public streets. About fifteen or sixteen of them will be, uh, facing public open spaces, uh, towards Pool Road. Um, all these units will have a, a maximum of, of three stories. And this development will be constructed in two phases. The first phase is taking place between Pool Road and the, uh, the east-west Collector Road. And then the second phase will be, uh, the rest of the lots and, and open spaces to the north of that, uh, Collector Road. As the applicant development team were, were looking and designing their site, of course, they were looking at the existing features, uh, that were present. Uh, they had a environmental survey conducted that identified, um, some environmental features, an existing stream towards, towards the, uh, top right of the site. Um, that, you know, will have, uh, restrictions on it that limit, uh, developable arrow area in that area. Also, there are some, uh, wetlands present, um, towards the southeast of the site. So just bring that up, uh, to mention that it was, uh, the, the applicant looked, looked at the existing site, considering that this is a conservation subdivision. Um, you know, and, and tried to, to use that, the existing, um, characteristics, the existing vegetation, and, uh, proposed their development around that. So we'll get into that a little bit later, but just wanted to bring, bring that up, that they've been focusing on, on the environmental features on this site. Um, on this graphic here, don't pay attention to the, the circles with the numbers in it. Uh, what I like about this is it shows the lot layout as it, it's superimposed on the existing conditions. So you can see a large majority of the site, um, is citing these, these lots and homes on the existing agricultural field, fields that are already cleared. Um, and then by doing that, it, it aims to preserve some of the existing, uh, trees and vegetation towards the northeast of the site. Um, so, so, uh, big points on here are they are trying to concentrate the development, development in the areas that are, um, already cleared. About twelve percent of the site will be, um, preserved, will be a preserved tree canopy. Uh, in addition, there will be a twenty-foot buffer on, on the exterior of all sides where vegetation is supposed to remain. So in sum, about forty-three percent of the total site is, will be dedicated to, uh, some form of open space and, and tree, uh, preserved tree canopy. Looking at open spaces, there's a variety here, active and passive. The, uh, applicant has demonstrated compliance with this. Um, so what we have highlighted is the active open spaces. They're exceeding what's required. And they're proposing amenity center with, with a pool, um, some, some playground, a playground, some yard games. Um, something unique here is a, a nine-hole disc golf course, um, and then a public greenway. For the passive open spaces, we're looking, you know, well exceeding what's required by the UDO. Uh, what's being proposed is, is a pollinator garden. Um, there, there definitely some preservation of natural resources with, um, some, some passive open space amenities throughout, and then enhanced roadside landscaping and, and hardscaping along Pool Road. So now we've, we've talked about the master plan, where the homes will be, what they look like, uh, what the open spaces will be. So, um, so now the, the applicant has provided, you know, specific architectural, uh, standards that would apply to this development. Uh, these are largely consistent with the architectural standards that, that are, uh, brought before, uh, both town council and LRB. Um, so, uh, we have it here, have all the information provided in, in the staff report, but they are generally in line with, with what we see with other, um, proposals. Um, so we also have, uh, representative imagery of the, of the elevations that, uh, could be built, um, based on, on these standards. So they're broken down by single-family detached and then, of course, um, townhomes. Um, happy to answer any questions about those, but we won't go through all of those. Um, so now we know what they, the houses will look like, and now I want to tell you how you get to those homes. Um, so we're looking at it on foot. Uh, pretty much every road in there, they'll all be public, um, except for, you know, most of the alleys will be private. But the public roads, uh, will have either five or six-foot sidewalks on them. And then, um, this line here shows, uh, where a ten-foot side path will be constructed on, um, on the roadway, on Pool Road, on the north-sou- south Collector, as well as a, uh, a public roadway trail throughout the site. Then if you're in your vehicle, well, what you would be looking at once this is developed, um, is the east-west Collector. Um, to the west of the site is the estates at Smith Crossing, where it's existing, uh, neighborhood with that, uh, Graythorne Place Road. Uh, this, this development would extend that road, um, from the west to the east. Um, what you're seeing on the right side of the plan is an approved development called Haven at Griffith Meadows. So they're constructing also a portion of the same Collector Street, you know, just a little bit, um, east of this site. So, um, if this, uh, application were to be approved, um, there'd be just an, another piece of this, uh, Collector Road constructed. Going north-south, they, the applicant has committed to building this to a Collector Street standard also. Uh, it's not identified in a comprehensive transportation plan, but considering the, uh, development potential in the area with vacant land to the north and, and surrounding, uh, the, the UDA war, it was warranted that, uh, this, this road be constructed to a Collector Street, uh, standard. So that's a commitment that the, the applicant's willing to, to do with this application. Then to zoom way out, looking at, uh, the area, what we have on the far left is Bethlehem Road, far right is Smithfield Road, and then at the bottom is Pool Road. And what we're showing here is, is how this Collector Street, uh, will piece together as development, um, occurs. So, uh, as you can see, the subject property is extending, um, from, from the left side of the screen. Haven at Griffin Meadows will construct their portion. There's, um, some, uh, intervening parcels that are within, uh, Wake County's jurisdiction at the time. Um, and then existing developments, and then Parkside at West Lake would, uh, be the final leg to get over to Smithfield Road. The development, uh, conducted a transportation impact analysis, uh, that was conducted back in December of twenty-four and January of twenty twenty-five. Uh, and it, uh, studied the development, uh, and anticipated a build-out year about twenty twenty-nine and grew their growth rate at, at three percent. It also considered, uh, other developments in air, in the area, two of which were in, in Town and Knightdale. One is Haven at Griffin Meadows, the other is Linden Oaks. Uh, both of those, uh, those developments are, um, under review. You know, their construction drawings are under review. Um, and then the, uh, the applicant also studied the, uh, City Raleigh development called Bank Channel. Um, it's on the, uh, west side of, uh, Hodge Road. Um, so they, they studied that and, you know, looked at all those impacts in conjunction with, uh, what's anticipated to be brought with this proposal. And, uh, when the staff report was published, uh, there were, um, three commitments that the, uh, the TIA, uh, recommended and the applicant was willing to install, but, uh, generally, you know, constructing the site access and making a, a stop-controlled intersection at Pool Road and then constructing a, uh, an exclusive, uh, eastbound left turn lane, uh, into the site. Part of the town's and DOT's review, uh, recommended that additional lanes, uh, were added. Uh, specifically a, uh, westbound right turn lane into the site, um, from Pool Road and then an exclusive southbound right turn lane onto Pool Road from, from Bethlehem. So those were recommendations. Uh, as of earlier this week, the applicant updated their TIA and have included those recommendations. So now that aligns with, uh, what the town and, and DOT, uh, saw appropriate, um, for the site. Now moving into the site development allowances and UDO compliance, uh, a lot of these are, are very, very common to development. So it's, it's nothing that you haven't seen before. It's a little bit unique just because, you know, every plan unit development, you know, is, is unique. But, uh, just to, to breeze through these, uh, front-loaded lots must be at least eighty feet wide. The applicant's proposing a minimum of sixty-foot wide. Uh, rear-loaded lots must be six, uh, must be thirty feet wide. Uh, applicants proposing rear-loaded, single-family with a minimum of thirty-four feet wide, and then the townhomes with twenty-foot minimum lot widths. Driveway lengths required to be thirty-five feet long. Uh, they're proposing, uh, twenty-five foot for front-loaded and then, uh, twenty foot for all rear-loaded product. Then setbacks, um, they're all, all specific to, to the housing type, um, but are somewhat in alignment with the UDO requirements. Somewhat, uh, unique, but all generally consistent with what, uh, has been approved in the past. Uh, lots are also required to front public streets. Um, in certain situations, like at the southern portion of the site, there'll be, uh, fifteen or sixteen townhomes that'll front open space that, um, is separating those homes and, and Pool Road. Um, so this, uh, site development allowance would be required to allow for that, um, design to happen. Residential landscaping just speaks to foundation plantings. Uh, they really spelled out how and where they're going to be, um, placing, uh, the foundation planting. So there's clear direction there. Uh, residential clearing and grading, uh, the applicant's proposing to, to, or is requesting approval to mass grade, you know, every lot, including lots greater than, than sixty feet wide. Uh, they have offered a condition that, uh, any lot within a hundred feet of any stream buffer would not be masqueraded. Um, so that, that will show up in a, in a voluntary offered, uh, zoning condition. Um, but just wanted to note that all the lots are proposed to be masqueraded. Moving into, uh, street classification and design, uh, you know, all roads are required to meet chapter ten and those, those design elements. Uh, street B, the, uh, Collector Road running, uh, east-west of the site will be designed as the main street. However, that riparian buffer that I've mentioned, um, that's an environmental feature. They're proposing to reduce the cross-section just to limit the impacts. Um, so, uh, the road will still connect. There'll still be bike lanes, there'll be, uh, pedestrian, there'll still be sidewalks and everything. So, you know, full, full facility will be constructed or just be a little bit narrower, narrower to, uh, limit impacts to the environment. Um, this one is, is rather unique, uh, talking about minimum centerline radius for, for local streets. So here, uh, in the site, the applicant's proposing a, a pretty unique, you know, called a, a cul-de-sac. Um, it's an area that will, is proposed to have a pollinator garden with some educational signage and, um, some, you know, access to, to the public greenway trail and everything. Um, so they're just requesting to not be bound by this a hundred and fifty-foot, uh, radius for this small, small area. Distribution of uses, uh, just, you know, proposing to deviate a little bit, uh, nothing significant or alarming. And then I think finally, uh, as you know, uh, the town's preference, whenever we have a town road and a DOT road, uh, those two collectors would, uh, align or, or converge with a roundabout. Um, as recommended by the TIA, the, the applicant is, uh, proposing just a stop-controlled intersection, so that's a, a stop sign. Water allocation policy, this is, you know, largely, uh, consistent with, with other proposals that we see. Uh, just to call out the, uh, the nine-hole disc golf, that's a little unique. I don't, I don't think we've seen that one in, in a private development proposed yet. Another one is just a, a buyer retention area, area for stormwater, um, being proposed, uh, south of the amenity site. But other than that, uh, the proposal complies with the water allocation policy. So the applicant is requesting this rezoning to a, with a base zoning district of GR eight. It's a plan unit development, so in these situations, the standards of the GR eight district would have to be met unless alternative provisions are proposed. Those are the site development allowances that we just went over. Just as a general reminder, the council can, uh, request but not require conditions to be placed on the development. Um, but I will note that the applicant has offered, uh, a handful of, of conditions out the gate. So we'll go over those here shortly. But before that, I'd just like to go over comprehensive plan. Uh, as you're aware, uh, the council was required to adopt their consistency statements to whether actions consistent with the comp plan and whether the action is reasonable in the public interest. So just to get into it, the, uh, intentional growth area map, you know, this is the, the first map we look at and it's really meant to establish the expectations and the, of the level of change, um, and development intensity over the plan horizon, so out to twenty thirty-five. Um, so this site is located within the growth reserve area. You know, these areas are generally on the outskirts of our, of our limits. And they're characterized by, you know, generally unserved or underserved by infrastructure, you know, water, sewer, um, police, fire. You know, your typical, uh, municipal, um, services. And it also identifies that, you know, sometimes it would be expensive for, for folks to, to extend these services. So whenever, uh, elected officials are taking a look at proposals, uh, there, this possibility that the playbook approach could be utilized, um, for this, um, this growth reserve area. However, the comp plan does, you know, caution decision-makers as to, you know, making, uh, or applying the playbook approach and, you know, really, uh, making sure that the, the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, the future of land use plan or future land use map are being, uh, met by the proposal if, if the playbook approach were to be, uh, utilized. Moving on to the urban small-town framework map, um, this is, this is a map that really just describes the, the, uh, the desired characteristics of, of any given area, um, of town. Um, in this location, there's not a lot of, of guidance there. So instead, um, it defers it to the future place type, which is the conservation subdivision. Um, and really, this, the future, uh, place type map is, is really where, where the rubber meets the road and starts to, um, guide developers on the preferred development pattern. Um, and it provides the framework for the town to realize their vision, uh, in this plan. So, you know, the conservation neighborhood, uh, is, is envisioned as a cluster development that aims to preserve and protect environmental features, your existing trees. You know, anything out there that, that has ecological value. ecological value. The idea of clustering that development, it allows compact development to occur, which can minimize costs on infrastructure, but while also maximizing larger swaths of land that are permanently conserved. Taking a step further, the comprehensive plan also identifies certain characteristics that proposals should achieve. And so like in sustainability, you should be looking at low-impact design or green stormwater infrastructure, looking at ways to retain water onsite, maybe through rain gardens, taking advantage of developing in areas that are already cleared, things with open space, trying to get them to be interconnected. And then preserving 30% to 60% of the site is a big factor for the conservation subdivision. So I mentioned earlier that about 43% of the site will be designated or dedicated in either open spaces that are programmed or preserved tree areas. So I highlight this just there, there's not only the future place type map that we look at, but there's also these other specific design characteristics that apply specifically to this place type that the developer should really strive to comply with. So this is an important step whenever staff's reviewing plans for consistency. And as part of the applicant's submittal package, they noted that some of the features that they're emphasizing that would apply here are the green stormwater infrastructure, pollinator gardens, pollinator-supportive landscaping, multimodal transportation options, some physical fitness-supported design, and then maybe a potential for some communal rain gardens at open spaces. So it doesn't stop there. There's also a conservation neighborhood-focused area study that the applicant has been encouraged to look at. So all this information has been provided in the staff report and the agenda packet, but these are really good places for everyone to look when evaluating this proposal against the comprehensive plan. Place type transect, so conservation subdivisions falls within neighborhood category. You guys have seen this for quite some time, but it shows how Town Nightdale could be developed from open spaces to the activity centers, rural to your urban small-town. Looking at the roadway network plan, the project proposal is generally consistent with the comprehensive transportation plan and the UDO by constructing or proposing to construct these collector streets. It's generally consistent with the side path and greenway plan. Looking at the comprehensive parks and rec plan, since the subject property is so far southeast of town, still within the ETJ, it's not within any of the service areas of existing parks. Guiding principles is another important factor of the comprehensive plan. As you're aware, there are eight guiding principles that all applicants and developers are encouraged to align with. Looking at this proposal, there's a potential with what's shared right now that it could lend itself to the town placemaking, home and neighborhood choices, environmental stewardship and sustainability, and then multimodal transportation system. Fort Worth Nightdale, it's also an important plan that we have. Just not a lot of information has been provided in the submittal package, so one of the recommendations is just to have the applicant take a look at that plan, see if there's ways for the project to align with that. The applicant also looked into the town's strategic plan and identified three focus areas that are connected, inclusive, sustainable, and active and healthy, and they felt that their proposal aligns with these focus areas and furthers their goals of that plan. Mentioned previously that some conditions were offered. They relate to construction traffic, not utilizing the existing Graythorne Place, where the existing neighborhood sits today. Another one talks about bi-retention, green stormwater infrastructure, committing to having at least one of those facilities installed, talking about pollinator gardens, educational signage, enhanced roadside landscaping, buffering around the edges, since they're not required, the applicant is committing to that today. Talking about parking spaces, guest parking for on-street parking, and then they're also voluntarily offering those architectural conditions as a zoning condition. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions council or LRB may have. After that, the applicant and development team are all here present and are prepared to address council and the LRB. Following that, we'll hear any public comment. So with that, my recommendation is after receiving public comment, make a motion to close the joint public hearing and refer ZMA 7-24 to the Land Use Review Board for a review and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm bringing to council questions.
I saw the noted public charging stations, was there any mention of pre-wired panels for solar panels or electric car chargers?
Yeah, so as I made that comment, we had a little bit of discussion. My understanding is that the applicant and developer are still talking through that, whether that's a viable option, but maybe they would be able to provide a little bit more on that.
That buffer that is shown along Pool Road, is that, that was a condition, but is that consistent with the, sort of that area with the comp plan? Are we sort of calling that out already, or is it, do we have to call it out? I just wondered if that's something we might need to think about in the boardroom.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the comp plan doesn't identify Pool Road as a rural corridor or a mixed-use corridor or anything, but what we did here was Haven at Griffith Meadows proposed enhanced roadside landscaping with additional landscape, with additional trees, shrubs, and a split rail fence. What I asked the developer is, hey, can you continue that so we have even longer continuous streetscape that is consistent with what will likely be built out there first?
So when the house is front to that, I mean, would there be a sidewalk connection or a greenway connection? How would that sort of?
Yeah, yeah, so it's not shown on these colorful plans, but if you dig into the black and white plans, there will be a sidewalk running in front of those units in between, you see the stop sign, and then there'll be a sidewalk there. And then we're hoping that we can also get a sidewalk connection to the multi-use paths that will be constructed on Pool Road. So you'll have multi-use path on Pool Road, enhanced landscape buffer, hopefully a sidewalk connection to get into the neighborhood, and then another sidewalk connection in front of those townhomes and your townhomes.
And the greenway connection, I'm wondering if we showed that, does it, if you just move the site correct?
Yes, so, let's see, so the bulb of the P shape is the internal actual greenway trail. So the vertical and horizontal, those are just side paths on roadway infrastructure, but what goes through the site, kind of eastward and then up, that's the public greenway trail. Originally proposed as a private, they were willing to dedicate a public, build it to our standards.
What's the ultimate cross-section of Pool Road right here when it's built out?
There's a four-lane boulevard, so I don't think I have a graphic of it, but two lanes each direction. So this development would be, if approved, would be constructing there, the northern half of that road.
So can we have a feel for what the, which lots are reminiscent of, wouldn't be masqueraded? I really like that they accounted for the agricultural space versus the tree that we, I just wish they had accounted for a little more. And, you know, finger-bright clearly to allow some of those mature trees with those homes and to somehow have a chance to transition to some cross.
Yeah, so I will say that they, I asked that they provide a tree survey up earlier. Usually that's not until after rezoning and construction drawings. Considering this is a conservation subdivision, I thought it'd be beneficial to see what's out there actually surveyed and see if there's a way to design around that or have some selective clearing. So I think the final work with grading and really knowing which trees can remain, which can't, will come as more planning is done and more engineering, but in general, I think they've done a good job, but definitely hear what you're saying, so we'll continue that
Did you mention that the developer, I know you said you mentioned it to the developer about the enhanced grid and landscaping, they, with the split rail fence and all, was that something that, read or not, was mentioned, you had reference to sort of keep that?
It's agreed upon, it's actually in the condition there. Sorry, I'm just going back and forth, but it is one of the conditions that it'd be substantially
Any questions from our LRB members?
I know you can hear me, but I want the folks behind me to hear. You mentioned that there was two lanes in each direction with a divided median on Pool Road. Will there be a dedicated left-turn lane if you are eastbound on Pool Road?
Yes, so, yes. I can show you a graphic here. So that was one of the recommendations of the TIA. Too many slides. So, yeah, so you'll see that yellow turn lane, so that would be if you're heading east, turning inside, that would be a dedicated left-turn lane. And then going the opposite direction, there'll be a dedicated right-turn lane to get into
I just wanted to clarify, you had said that all the buffers, the buffers between this development and Smith Estates, that is a 20-foot, is that correct?
That's what's proposed. So based on the adjacent zoning districts, the UDO doesn't require a buffer, but staff always recommends at least a 20-foot. They've committed to that, it's in a condition, proposed condition. So they're proposing at least 20-foot buffer on all sides, so not just to the east of the state.
Thank you. And one other question, the parks service area, that's only the town parks, is that correct? That doesn't include the future Lake Myra Park?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head if this would be within that two-and-a-half-mile service?
I don't know, I'll tell my head, find out.
Can you tell me what the minimum driveway length would be?
For?
For the single-family homes?
For the single-family, it'd be 25 feet. For the front-loaded, it'd be 25 feet, and then for all rear-loaded, it'd be 20 feet, which is generally in line with what's been improved recently.
Add a question. For the guiding, excuse me, sorry, for the guiding principles, did it show that it was not inclusive, it didn't, yeah, can you tell me, can you explain why it's not inclusive in Liverpool Town? What makes it not qualify for that?
Yeah, you give me one second, please. Let's see if I have it here. I did not have it up here. So the inclusive Liverpool Town, it's speaking to making sure that it's a welcoming place, but I don't have a good answer for you right now, so if that's all right, I would follow up with you or get you that answer.
Any additional questions from this, or we could put it up with the applicant?
Thank you.
This time it's turned over to the applicant to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is David Bergmark. I'm a planner with McAdams here on behalf of Lennar to discuss this Hopkins Farm Planning Unit Development. I have other members of McAdams with me as well, and representatives of Lennar, if there's any questions that might be better directed to them. I want to thank staff for their very thorough presentation. There might be a few things I skip over in this. I think everyone's familiar with where we are, getting one of the project highlights, but just to remind everybody, this is GR8 planned unit development, 171 units, mostly rear-loaded, there's just a little over 30 front-loaded units on there with just under three and a half dwellings per acre total being proposed. In terms of our open space, that's been a key element of this site from the beginning, with over 40% of the site as some form of open space, with about four acres of active, about 10 acres of passive, and then another seven acres of what I'll term common open areas that don't necessarily fit into one of your other two categories. Our amenities within, a place within these open spaces include a pool and bathhouse, playground, yard games, disc golf that's on the eastern side of the site that you saw, traditional park spaces, the public greenway that Gideon pointed out, as well as pollinator I think Gideon gave a pretty comprehensive overview of the site, but I did want to just say that from the beginning, we did want to establish a range of housing options, whether that be what we see as more often starter homes in terms of the townhomes, then your smaller rear-loaded, single-family homes in yellow, and then you could graduate up to the larger, front-loaded homes in orange. The townhomes, we concentrated a little bit more on Pool Road, just because that's kind of your main RTO road cutting through, but there was a request by the town to kind of extend that a little bit more, not have it quite as concentrated, so we pulled some of those further up north towards our east-west Collector Road. Gideon also spoke about the Collector Roads, the east-west one that's shown on the comprehensive plan, and as well as the north-south one coming from our site drive that's not shown on the plan, but it was a request of the town, just forward-looking at what that area to the further north might be, and something that we agreed upon. And upon that, we know Nightdale loves roundabouts, so we put a roundabout at the intersection of those two Collector Roads as well, with the extension of Graythorne Place. You can also just see our two open-space amenities, our main two open-space amenities on the site, with the main one with our pool and clubhouse at that southeast corner of that roundabout with the A designation on the screen. Further south in the site is our open-space amenity B. That's where we'd have more playground, yard games, kind of flex lawn space, and it would be entirely encircled by homes within this, so great accessibility, great visibility for those lots, great benefit to those residents. And then the disc golf, of course, kind of in the northeast corner, utilizing that open space area, so looking to both conserve land but also provide a means of residents to enjoy it and kind of be exposed to it at the same time, while limiting any kind of disturbance on it. Gideon mentioned we did the TIA. He covered the three main improvements, but just for everybody's benefit, again, this would include both a dedicated left and right-turn lane into our site drive, as stated, as well as a dedicated southbound right-turn lane coming off of Bethlehem Road. During that neighborhood meeting, one of the items that did get some discussion was about traffic and just concerns of anybody going from this new development into the west on the existing Graythorne Place. So putting in place that traffic circle to us was a big benefit to them, not only for the town's benefit of facilitating those two Collector Road movements, but also just forcing anybody who's going westbound into that existing subdivision to have to slow down as they go around that traffic circle. This site was really meant to highlight our different buffers, our pedestrian amenities. I feel like Gideon really covered our different pedestrian amenities, but suffice to say, between the multipurpose paths, the public greenway, the on-street bicycle lane along our east-west Collector that would also continue into the Haven at Griffith Meadows to the east, I think this would be a very walkable, very bicycle-friendly development with lots of options for people to safely get around, interconnecting the different amenities and green spaces within the development. Gideon went over the buffers, but just for your benefit, essentially here, the in blue would be our 20-foot type B buffers. The area in green I'm highlighting just because these are areas that we're going to be preserving a lot of existing canopy, a lot of existing land there. So even if on the plan it says 20-foot buffer, in reality, you're going to have more vegetation there just naturally from what's being preserved, so I just kind of wanted to point that out in that green area. And then the enhanced streetyard buffer. in, in that green area. And then the enhanced street yard buffer, shown in yellow along Gideon kind of stole my thunder on this one, but I do think this was really a big element of this project, was looking at from the get-go, how does the layout, how do you, from the start, form the layout, thinking about what, where the existing vegetation is, thinking about how can you concentrate development to really avoid those areas to, to allow for a lot of preservation within a conservation neighborhood. Since we are under that designation, that was a really a formative part of this from the, for the beginning, while at the same time, accounting for that east-west collector, accounting for that north-south collector that was desired to, to connect through. So we're kind of proud of this. We're afraid we might have set a, a dangerous precedent for ourselves moving forward, but I think it's an important element for this conservation neighborhood. Gideon mentioned we have over 40% open space, over six acres of tree preservation that would be provided. As we go further along into construction drawings, you know, we would have more detailed information in terms of areas that might be disturbed and probably could give more detailed beyond the tree survey that we kind of voluntarily did early as well. Other elements that we feel like is really aligned with the conservation neighborhood theme is the enhanced roadside landscaping, that buyer retention cell that's at the southern side of our main amenity, just south of our pool would be where our buyer retention cell would be. We are looking at, there's an old farm pond that's pretty shallow, not really a, at least in my opinion, a, a feature you want to necessarily try to preserve and protect. And we looked at that and said that, to the, to us, this was more of a, of a risk than anything else. And farm ponds, you know, they're not natural formations. They're basically man coming in and interfering with nature. So in the theme of conservation neighborhood, we were proposing to remove that dam, let that area kind of reestablish naturally as it will, whether that is wetlands or, or wooded areas, we'll have to wait and see. And then last but not least, we do have the pollinator gardens, both a formal one at the end of what I refer to as a cul-de-loop, just kind of an alternative to, to a cul-de-sac at that eastern edge, as well as a less formal one in, in terms of having pollinator-friendly species planted within that pollinator garden. So these slides, staff has not seen these until I sent this presentation, but I really pushed my team to provide me some visuals of the open space areas that they were developing. So on the left side of the screen, you see where these are located on the site, and on the right, the, the conceptual drawing of what we're envisioning for that amenity space. So this is our main pool and bathhouse area along the intersection of our two collector roads. Just note it's turned kind of to the side, just for visual purposes here. This slide shows the open space amenity B, further south on the site, where we'd have our, our playground, we'd have yard games, trails, kind of an informal soccer area and flex lawn space. And here's a visual of that, again, what I refer to as, as the cul-de-loop. It's really only serving as a turnaround for like four lots, but we wanted to kind of highlight this and make, make use of it more. So we're providing a formal pollinator garden within this space, and one of the items that we were putting on our water allocation was for public art. So we wanted to kind of extend that pollinator theme and draw on that and have kind of a beehive hexagonal-type pattern to the crosswalks leading to and from this pollinator garden. And then extend, looking at potentially even extending that into where we'd have a gateway or a trellis, you might incorporate that, that kind of hexagonal beehive-type pattern into that entry feature as well. So in summary, we really see Hopkins Farm as being a conservation folks' design, as it should be, with over 40% open space, with really concentrated development, large contiguous areas of, of tree being, tree preservation, and the incorporation of elements such as green stormwater infrastructure. We think we've created a really higher, highly interconnected development with the two collector roads, with the multipurpose path, with the bike lanes, with the public greenway, as well as that roundabout that both helps the town kind of achieve its, its vision from a transportation standpoint and provides more assurance and safety for the existing neighbors to the west. And finally, we believe we succeeded in offering a real variety of residential offerings in a neighborhood that people would feel welcome in, to the, to that extent. And in our mind, neighborhood amenities that really go above and beyond what you would normally see for a development that has less than 200 units. So we hope that you'll support this request, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Will you consider premarking for?
I will, I will, I will urge, and I'll bring this back up to Lennar. I know that they were looking into this, what the cost would be. I know there were some concerns about how many people would utilize it versus not. I think there's also a trade-off of if, if they think they could sell it, if they think, if they think there'd be a demand for it, you're also then increasing the house price. And so it's like affordability versus extra elements, but we'll continue to have that discussion.
You know, definitely in the area where, I mean, Knight-Delos has a pretty high solarization rate, you've got to be, you know, there's a large number of people that drive their cars, they would certainly market for it.
I appreciate that.
I think just from a sort of engineer's standpoint, thinking about conserving existing vegetation, but SEM, certainly this home requires some clearery and trees, so I just explicitly urge all the, you know, the existing ponds, I would not recommend trees within the pond, obviously. If there might be a way to sort of reconfigure that, I would almost encourage the SEM to be where the existing pond is, maybe construct a wetland and sort of where the SEM, but maybe, you know, even a more linear SEM or something that just doesn't take as much clarity, some just increase, some a little bit different, certainly like it's not sort of just a square hole. So, you know, just think about, think about that in ways to really amend it as that would be my comment for now.
Thank you.
Anything? Any further alert?
I'd say if you like that, um, the pollinator garden crosswalk stuff, I think you might be doing yourself disservice putting it in a way that it may enjoy every season and sort of set aside. I want to reiterate, uh, the, if you're trying to clear it, it's up those wooded areas. We always get the requests and mataspray everything, but we, we created that for a reason, and trying to get a conservation neighborhood that we want to take that as time for conservation. So I know you're, you know, pulling into the trees less, but I'm hesitant to mataspray them there. And I wonder if you had any thoughts on, I, I haven't heard with the, with the neighborhood was like, as far as, is it a good transition between the neighborhoods overall?
The roadway transition itself or the neighborhood transition?
Between neighborhoods as the neighborhoods go down the road.
Yeah. Uh, I don't want to necessarily speak on behalf of the neighbors entirely, but I mean, there was, I mean, there were discussions about, about, mainly about buffers. So I think there was a sensitivity to where we have our western side backing up to them, what would be provided. There is a lot of existing vegetation there. It, it stops just a little bit short as it goes south. It doesn't crack, go all the way to Pool Road, but most of that western side has existing trees, so they'd really have the benefit of, of there being existing vegetation, not just new plantings. The focus was a little bit more on, on traffic than there was about character of the neighborhood concerns being, being expressed. I think as long as they had a buffer in place, that they felt more comfortable about that and just wanted to make sure they weren't being negatively impacted. So that's how the condition about restricting construction traffic and not using that existing road, the, the roundabout placement came in. There was discussions about speed limits, and I confirmed with Gideon that even though these are collector roads, that there was no problem posting those at 25 miles per hour, make sure people aren't going too fast. So I feel like that's generally addressed neighbor concerns, but if anybody's listening and I'm wrong, please reach out to me.
I have a question. I think I have two questions. I believe Gideon showed a slide of the plans with stop signs, and I just wanted to ask where all the stop signs in the neighborhood are going to be?
So, uh, I don't know if I have anything on my slides that, that shows that, but I mean, uh, let's see, what's the best one to... So these are not stop sign, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure which slide you're referring to, it is. This, this, the numbers on this are part of the town's connectivity index, but, but I can get you a copy. I mean, in, in, in general, whenever you have one routine into another, except for the roundabout, you're going to have a, you're going to have a stop sign at, at that place. You're going to have a barricade at the end where that road is stubbing to the northern border. That wouldn't be a stop sign, but there would be a temporary barricade until that road continued. The, the, what I refer to as the cul-de-loop wouldn't have a stop sign, because it essentially would have a, a motion around it, but I can, I can make sure you get that material.
I, okay. Well, on his slide, I just, I think I just saw two, so I was curious to know if there was going to be, if there was going to be more stop signs.
Yes. I think what he was pointing out is there's some language in the, the town's UDO that speaks to roundabouts when collectors intersect thoroughfares. And so he was looking at, he was pointing out that we were having, we had a stop condition, we had a stop sign where our entry drive is connecting to, to Pool Road. So we have a roundabout, but just not, not at that location. But I think that's part of the reason why he was calling out specific stop signs.
And then I guess I wanted to get some clarity around the parking, the guest parking spaces. Is that what we're seeing on each side, like where there's, I can see the parking, I think I saw maybe on the agenda, like 100 parking spaces with that? Maybe I'm, I'm...
We have, yeah, we, we're having, uh, we had as a zoning condition, a minimum of 100 guest parking spaces that are being provided in a number of different areas along our north-south collector road. There's guest parking all the way up that. I mean, there's, there's kind of bulb bouts for street trees, so they're not all just consecutive line, but there's guest parking going up that main north-south road. That's one big source we have along our open space area. On the right side, let me go to the slide that has a number. So along open space number B, there's guest parking built into the sides of that amenity for both guest parking and for just act, uh, people that may be using it to, to access the, the open space while they're visiting. We do have some off-street parking areas along some of the alleys as well. So you'll see a, a few pockets of that along that western side. There were some concerns from staff over, had the proximity of that to the collector road, so we kind of pulled it back a little bit, so that you're not going to be turning into the alley and then immediately trying to turn into a parking space, but you'll see some there, as well as on the eastern edge of the, of the town homes, you'll, you see an off-street parking one kind of aligned with, with Street A there. That, that street name may have changed, by the way, but aligned with that. So a combination of on-street and off-street, and there's a pocket of it up on that little island in the middle of those alleys, uh, towards the north, within the middle of that, the yellow block of single-family detached homes as well.
If no others, thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will look forward for public comments. Just as a reminder, please be sure to have signed in on the speaker sheet located at the entry table. Comments are limited to three minutes. We do have a timer that will indicate if the time has expired. Large groups are asked to designate a spokesperson. When at the podium, please be sure to state your name and address for the record. At last, public comment is an opportunity to share information with the town council and the land use review board. This is not a time for discussion, but rather an opportunity for the council and our alert members to take comments under consideration. Respectful communication is expected and appreciated. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak on this item, they may come forward.
Good evening. Rudolph Morton, 1729 Font Hills Lane. And some of our concerns are, they talked about there being a barrier of vegetation and trees, but there's part of Font Hills that is open to there not being any barriers to separate what's being built over there. So we would like to be able to see something that would give us a barrier of separating the neighborhood from our backyards, where we would have them directly in our backyard, instead of it just being open now. Also, we heard no conversation about Font Hills Lane. There's an opening at the end of Font Hills Lane on the opposite end that goes around where the pond is now that opens up, that we, we see as they would be opening that up, that we would be having traffic to come in from Font Hills Lane all the way around to, um... Graythorne is where it would be at. And then the opening coming from Graythorne into the new opening, what about the traffic congestion? There's no four-lane highways on Bethlehem Road. There's still two lanes, which you're looking at traffic being backed up through the subdivision of, of trying to get out in the morning or get in in the evening. The congestion is just going to be so great that you're not going to see people being able to get there in a timely manner. So that's a, a, a great concern. And the value that it will take on, on the Estates of Smith's, coming in there with that type of traffic coming in to the subdivision that is existing now, there's a great big difference in the type of quality of home that's in our subdivision now, opposed to what is being built. So we would like to be able to see some separation, so that when they look at the communities, people can distinguish the two communities from the one that's being built from a starter home, um, community to one that's an established, upper echelon community, that some homes are in the million dollars there. And now you're talking about homes being in the three, $400,000 at the most, from what I understand, them proposing. So we'd like to see some discussion take place about that, of redirecting the traffic for Font Hills and, um... Graythorne, Graythorne. I never, so I, I would hope that that's something that the council would take into consideration in the planning board. And also, the other end of Font Hills Lane that has not been talked about. And there was discussion in the last meeting of the neighborhood wanting to be able to have some barrier to separate the neighborhoods and not just have it open as they have it planned out now. I think that you're looking at an exposure of about seven houses that have absolutely zero barrier coming from the other.
We appreciate your comments. We are always, so if you have more comments that you would like to share, you can sit in, write the comments at any point in time as well.
Okay.
So we appreciate you sharing these comments, captured and heard these comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. Is there anyone else here tonight who wishes to speak on this item? If so, they may come forward at this time. If not, now I'll bring it back to the council for any last questions, comments.
So, sort of like I just posted on that, that last, uh, town in this county, I was also thinking about that buffer and noting that, you know, with the, with the, you know, there are lots on there, the, you know, roadway sort of that close to somebody's backyard, I think certainly could be buffer. And one thing in particular I would note is, alley Street C and the utility alley, as folks turn into that, you know, certainly their headlights would be shining.
folks turn into that, you know, certainly their headlights would be shining directly into somebody's backyard, so certainly that definitely needs to be screened very well so that those headlights don't create a nuisance for those neighbors. So I think, you know, certainly mitigate those impacts. The other thing, the, I would note is the front-loaded lots, I think one reason we get rear-loaded a lot, it really mitigates sort of the street feel, gives a sense of place, certain pedestrian feels, that I would be looking to mitigate those impacts with, you know, much larger porches, some architectural features on the garage doors. You have those opportunities when there are rear-loaded products, again, sort of pedestrian fields, so one of those is some carriage style doors or glazing or something like that, and that is appropriate to mitigate some of those trade-offs there. And one big thing that wasn't discussed is there's, it looks like there's about six single-wide number homes out here on the existing site, maybe two double-wide, something that it looks like there's existing folks that live there. So I certainly think as you dive into the affordable Nightdale plan, we don't want to move people from affordable housing, you know, out. So I would certainly be looking for them to be put in at least the same position that they're in, you know, and I just have that sort of a mental time frame to get out. But I think it's certainly something to work with staff, staff owners, try to figure out what that would look like because, why else on the existing site are power plants that are living out there? I assume they're ready because they're not individually... And I have my other comments that are already made. That's all I have.
Anything additional?
Could I get Gideon to just clarify the northern boundary of the proposal, which streets we're connecting to?
We're going to back this aerial. So the, it'll be the connection at Pool Road at the site access, and that'll go due north to the edge of the red property boundary. There'd be a stub there. And then the east-west Collector will go from Graythorne Place eastward stub to future of Haven. So there's no, no proposal, not with this application to connect. There's that northern loop of Font Hills that is, there's a parcel that's not, as part of this application. So this applicant is not proposing a connection to Font Hills at all.
I'm going to propose to my fellow hearing, we're going to see May 724 to the land use review board for review and recommendation.
Second. Alhambavon?
Aye.
Majority approves, motion carries. That concludes our joint vote of carries for the evening. So at this time, we have a motion to your...
Second.
Alhambavon?
Aye.
Any votes? Majority approves, motion carries, we're standing there. Thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for sharing your comments. Thank you to our alert members for joining us this evening. Have a good rest of your evening.